Good evening, everyone. Welcome, everyone, to the July 26 Merriam City Council meeting. I'd like to ask you to please join me by standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Merrick Sizemore.
Here.
Councilmember Debold.
Here.
Councilmember Hands.
Here.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Here.
Councilmember Naff.
Here.
Councilmember Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Pape.
Here.
Councilmember Silvers.
Here.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Here.
Very good. Next item is public items, and I need somebody to retrieve that sheet for me, see if I got anybody signed up, if you don't mind. While we're doing that, this portion of our agenda, we allow members of the public, actually encourage them to use this time to make comments about matters that do not appear on the agenda. Comments about items on the regular agenda will be taken as each item is considered, and there is an individual limit of five minutes per person. And in accordance with the Merriam governing body rules and procedure, the city reserves the right to refuse public comments that are personal, impertinent, or slanderous. Anyone who's signed up for the public comments this evening? And make sure, if you, we have two people that signed up on this. If you mean to speak, certainly you'll have the opportunity, but on this sheet, we don't have any. So at this point, if you have interest in coming up, making public comments, this would be the time to come up and do so. Good evening, Mr. Frisby. Welcome back.
The mayor and I sat down and talked the other day in his office for... Gosh, what, forty-five minutes or something? About climate change. And I want to bring to the team up here some information, and I'm just kind of waiting until things settle down and get permission to do that. Jennifer Brown is our leader in the Citizens Climate Lobby group, and she gave you a presentation while I was sitting up there, and at least you got an introduction, that gave more information to the mayor the other day. So we'd like to come back and see what we can do about giving you some more information. Thanks.
All right, thank you, and thanks for staying involved. Anyone else wish to come up for public items? If you're seeing none, I'll go ahead and close out public items, and we will move to the consent agenda. Normally, we would enact more than one item under consideration, but there's only one item this evening being considered, and that's a considered approval of the minutes of the city council meeting held on July the 12th, 2021. So unless there are questions or comments by the council, I'll entertain a motion and a second. Jason.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move that the council approve Consent Agenda Item One.
Motion made. Bob Pape?
I'd like to second, Mayor.
Made and second, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Debold.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Naff.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Pape.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Very good. Let's move to the mayor's report. I have one item for consideration. I'm going to turn this over to Jennifer Jones-Lacy to make introductions. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Today, I wanted to, I'm going to introduce Karen Clausen with Mid-America Regional Council. She is a principal planner with the Air Quality Program, and she is going to present on the Regional Climate Action Plan, which was recently adopted by Mark's Board in March of this year. She's been doing a bit of a traveling road show, presenting to many councils and other organizations, Johnson County and in the region. And this is kind of the first introduction that you all will have to this particular plan, and she is ready to have that conversation. So without further ado.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you so much for having me. All right, let's get this pulled up. Okay, all right, looks good. Well, great, thank you so much for having me this evening. As Jennifer said, we have been going around the region and kind of doing a roadshow, and it's been really exciting to talk to so many different cities, counties, organizations, and businesses to kind of unveil, to roll out our new Climate Action Plan. This is the first regional climate action plan that we've had, and we're excited to not only roll it out, but to start working towards implementation as well. So the first thing I'll say about the Regional Climate Action Plan is that it was a collaboration between Mid-America Regional Council as well as Climate Action KC. And if you're not familiar with Climate Action KC, they're kind of a new local nonprofit that's a coalition of elected leaders throughout the region and volunteers and organizations as well. So they were a great partner in helping to bring about a lot of great engagement throughout the community. So this plan is really about providing kind of a framework, a guide for local governments in taking action on climate throughout the region. It's very, it's very flexible. You'll see that it's a very broad plan, and the idea is that all local governments, businesses, organizations can find themselves somewhere in this plan. And based on the interests of the individual cities, they can put together their own plan that really speaks to their own needs. So we start off our presentations by presenting a series of guiding thoughts. And these guiding thoughts originally came from a climate resilience strategy that Mark created as being a climate champion, and this is from 2015. But we think a lot of the guiding principles still lay a good foundation for thinking about implementation of the plan. So the first principle is so much of what we need to do, we want to do already. There's a lot here in this plan that is derived from a lot of other planning work that has had hundreds, potentially thousands of people engaged and involved in providing their feedback on. We know we want to have healthy communities. We know we want to have a healthy environment and make sure people have access to the opportunities that they need to be successful. And we've also already proven that we can do a lot of this. And here's a great example. It's just, this is Westside Housing's solar installation in the west side of Kansas City, Missouri, but solar is popping up all over the place. And we know we can do this. Individual installations like this are easy, but how do we scale this up so we can get more solar and renewable energy all over town? And this applies to more than just renewable energy, of course. And solutions must match the scale of the challenge. We know that climate change is a global challenge, but we need to, you know, act locally and make sure that the solutions that we put in place are matching the scale of the challenge even at a regional level. And then number four, leadership comes from all of us. We believe that, you know, all of us have leadership qualities and the ability to do something related to climate action, whether it's an individual deciding to do compost bin for the first time, or maybe you're a CEO of a business and you're instituting a new sustainability policy, or you are the mayor of a city. So leadership can come from all of us, and in this plan, we hope to build leadership skills through leadership development programs, providing all sorts of resources through Mark, like Government Training Institute and otherwise, to help build that leadership. And then finally, do no harm. We know that ignoring climate change is harmful, but we know that doing a lot is possible. So one of the first things we did as we were developing this plan was to put together a greenhouse gas inventory, because we need to know where we started from, right? So we looked at three main sectors for greenhouse gas emissions, energy, transportation, and waste. And what you can see here in this pie chart is that about two-thirds of our greenhouse gas emissions are coming from the energy sector, so heating and cooling our buildings. And then transportation accounts for about another third. And this is all on-road transportation. We weren't including things in here like air travel and freight travel by trains. So potentially, transportation could be much, much bigger slice of the pie here, and waste accounts for just a small, small part of it. And our mitigation strategies in the Climate Action Plan sort of mirror what we found here in the greenhouse gas inventory. We also undertook a climate risk and vulnerability assessment, which is kind of the second piece that's focused on the adaptation side of the plan. One of the first things that we did was, we looked at local hazard mitigation plans. And for the planning area that we're covering with this plan, there are three different hazard mitigation plans. So looking at those plans, we identified the top hazards that would be potentially exacerbated by climate and which ones we really need to focus on in this plan. So these are the top six hazards, and based on probability and consequence, if we had to kind of look at the highest-risk hazards here, we're looking at flooding, extreme heat, and drought. And flooding, of course, probably rises a little bit to the top because we're already seeing a lot of impacts related to flooding in our region. And this summer is showing how extreme heat and drought is affecting our country. We're lucky right now that we're like just south of that borderline. Everything north of us is in drought. Everything west of us is having extreme heat and drought conditions as well. We could very much be experiencing this later on in the summer, even next year. So these are things that we'll be paying attention to moving forward. We also conducted a regional socioeconomic stress assessment, and we put together an index that resulted in a series of maps, and this is kind of a snapshot of one of those. And we were trying to answer the questions with these maps about where are the most vulnerable communities in our region. So this map looked at a variety of socioeconomic indicators, and what you see here is not surprising to us. When we do environmental justice assessments at Mark, we see the same parts of the region pop up, right? So it's the urban areas of the region, KCK, KC Mo. There are areas of Johnson County where there's some vulnerabilities. There's vulnerability everywhere, there is, depending on how you look at vulnerability. But these are the most intense areas. We also did a assessment looking at socioeconomic stress as it related to flooding, so overlaying floodplains, looking at heat, heat island effect, and we also looked at tornadoes. So our plan resulted, after a bunch of engagement that we did, we did a lot of online engagement, because this was, of course, last year during the pandemic. We got a lot of great feedback from individuals, from cities that we talked to, as well as organizations and businesses. And what we came up with were these nine core areas of our plan, and they exceed what we included in our greenhouse gas inventory. A good example is food and agriculture. We didn't include agriculture in our original inventory. We plan to do so in the future, but it was such a significant issue during the pandemic because food insecurity is already high in the Kansas City region, but it skyrocketed because of the pandemic. And then there was issues of potential supply chain, food supply chain issues. And so we knew that the issues of the pandemic are very similar in some ways to climate change, and so it's important that we start thinking about food and agriculture now. So there are three kind of qualitatively different action areas here, and I'll talk about them briefly. So the first one is collaboration and leadership. And here, we're talking about that regional piece, because we have 123 cities that are included in the planning area of this plan, and we know we need to work on collaboration and coming together on this issue. Leadership, I already talked about. We hope to put a lot of programming together to help build leadership around climate action. Innovation and finance, another action area, is really hoping to really make use of the rich entrepreneurial and innovation ecosystem that we have in Kansas City, integrate climate into perhaps new businesses, and find new solutions that we may not have already thought about. Finance is obvious. We know that paying for anything is always a big hurdle, and so we'll want to think strategically and very creatively about how we can finance some of these different opportunities. And then community resilience is very much all about adapting to climate change and is really focused on developing connections throughout the community in order to get to that community resilience. So how will this plan help us on the emissions side? So we know through our greenhouse gas inventory that the region produces about 30 million metric tons of greenhouse gases in 2019. That was our base year. If you kind of look at a trend of business as usual, so no intervention whatsoever, we're looking at about 37 million metric tons of greenhouse gases that need to be reduced by 2050 to get to our goal of net zero by 2050. So this is kind of a waterfall chart that shows you how we'll get to that goal. A lot of the reduction will come from energy efficiency, putting in place more renewables throughout the region. Transportation is a big chunk of this as well, and that includes kind of transportation and land use and how those things work together. A little bit comes from waste, and then for offsetting the rest of the greenhouse gas emissions where we can't reduce from the energy or the transportation sector, we'll be using sequestration strategies, which is really focused on, obviously, there's the technical carbon capture side of it that's controversial and not really the focus of our plan. We're really focused on nature-based solutions, so using trees and soils and different nature-based solutions to sequester, offset those remaining emissions. So adaptation, we're focused on, there's a lot of adaptation strategies in the plan, but focusing on kind of five core areas. Resilient infrastructure is really about making sure the infrastructure we have in place can withstand the impacts of hazards that may be coming our way. This can include making sure that our transportation systems can withstand flooding that we might endure and also provide redundancy in the system. So if for some reason you're unable to use your car, you have options for other transportation. Food and agriculture, this is all about ensuring that we have the ability to continue to grow food here in the Kansas City region, and urban agriculture has really taken off over the last couple of decades, I would say. So we want to make sure that we're providing, we're providing support and resources to make sure that that continues and allow more people to become part of that. Urban agriculture can be at different scales, of course. We want individuals, homeowners, to think about their own food consumption and maybe how they can support their own sustainability by growing food and composting. This is also about the food insecurity piece as well. There's a lot of food waste that goes into our landfills, something to the tune of 350,000 tons a year by our region. And that creates methane when it's anaerobically digested in our landfills. And methane is about 21 times more potent of a greenhouse gas than carbon dioxide itself. So it's nothing that we want to ignore. Related to that, so organic waste, so making sure that we're taking those food scraps and putting them to good use. In composting, we have great organizations like Missouri Organic. We have, you know, on the Kansas side, Suburban and other sorts of businesses that are making use of compost and getting that out into the market. Cities can use compost to help with their own landscaping needs. And so that's a great thing for cities to kind of start thinking about. How do they compost their own lawn waste and put that back into the earth? Nature-based solutions, again, I mentioned, it's, you know, all about trees and green infrastructure and increasing, conserving the trees that we have and building up our urban and our riparian forests so that we are, you know, building, building shade, reducing urban heat island and sequestering more carbon in the ground. And then finance and innovation, which I've already spoken about, is another powerful part of the adaptation strategy. I'm going to skip that slide. So as we've been going around to local governments and presenting all of this information, again, this is a very flexible plan, and I'm interested to hear kind of what areas of this plan might interest Merriam moving forward. So one of the things you could focus on, of course, is energy. Making sure all of your buildings are energy efficient. This building is fairly new, so it's probably very energy efficient. But what is it that you can do to help homeowners build their energy efficiency as well? Urban greening. Transportation and land use is part of strategies that local governments have been focusing on. Installing bike lanes, protected bike lanes are becoming more prevalent in the Kansas City region. And so we've been encouraging that as a way to actually provide sustainable and safe choices for people who are wishing to travel in other ways besides their private automobile, food and agriculture, of course. And then planning and decision-making. So we've also been asking local governments to consider putting in place somebody like a resilience officer or a sustainability planner to help shepherd some of this work. In many cases, that's a new hire. Sometimes it's, you know, your assistant city manager who is taking on some of this role as well. And so planning and decision-making and training up your staff is a good part of that. And then thinking like a partner. And we put this slide in here because there's a lot of connections across the region and ways we can collaborate on different projects. And so reaching out to your neighbors can help bring about additional co-benefits and scale up the benefits overall. We've also been, this is kind of my last slide with our contact information on it. As we've been going around to cities and counties, there has been interest in adopting resolutions of support for this plan. Several cities have already done that. A couple, just off the top of my head, Roland Park has adopted one. The city of Smithville, North Kansas City. Ride KC is going to be adopting one this week. Johnson County, we're working with them on that process right now. So we do have a sample resolution of support that I've given to staff, and we hope you would entertain perhaps passing that at some point in time. But that's the end of my presentation. That's kind of a snapshot of our plan, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Jason?
Actually, I have a couple of questions. Does Mark and, sorry, Climate Action KC have an opinion on green credits and whether they work or not and whether they support them?
I think so. They're definitely controversial in the private sector because a lot of individuals think that it's kind of letting businesses off the hook, right? And some of that is kind of, can be kind of true, depending on how it's done. I think it's a tool in the toolbox we don't want to completely dismiss. And I think there could be some ways to use credits in our region and even thinking about carbon insetting, so instead of carbon offsetting, using, you know, with, like at Mark, for instance, if we were to do carbon insetting, we could look at our own carbon emissions, which we're doing right now, or going through our own process. And then for, you know, for areas where we can't offset or where we can't reduce our emissions, maybe there's a way that we could offset or inset and kind of reinvest that funding into our own work that is further reducing greenhouse gas emissions elsewhere in the community. So there's a lot of opinions out there, and it really depends how it's applied. So, yeah, it's a great question.
Yeah, you know, I've been thinking about this quite a bit. I kind of, a little bit of a dual life here in the city and also we have a family farm. And so it seems to me that the sequestration leg, you know, one of the obvious things is to be able to use ground to grow plants that will do a good job of sucking carbon dioxide out of the air. Is there anything that we can do, since we're an urban area, generally affluent, to partner up with, you know, smaller communities to help them to, you know, these more rural areas, to think about possibly doing something different? For example, like in our case, we are basically started just last year a Christmas tree farm. So we're taking acreage as pasture and putting, you know, to hopefully to use of... But I know everybody can't do that, but what I'm saying is, are there things that we can do in the urban context to reach out a little bit broader to help with the, you know, sequestration side of this as well, to maybe juice that up a little bit, too?
Yeah. Yeah, so I encourage you to read the food and agriculture section of our plan because it digs into that a little bit more specifically. I think the first thing that we can do is support growers and farmers that are already doing the type of practices that are better for the earth in terms of sequestration and reducing or capturing carbon dioxide. So there are a lot of farms starting to kind of turn towards regenerative agriculture where they're using things like cover cropping and no-till to produce. And, yeah, to the extent that we can support those farmers through, maybe they're coming to farmers' markets or participating in community-supported agriculture, I think that's the first thing that we can do. The, it's a little, it's a little bit trickier beyond that, and I think there's still a lot of things that need to be done in terms of providing funding for farms to be able to move towards regenerative agriculture, because it's not, it's not cheap on the front end, but it can be very rewarding and productive financially once those systems start beginning to go in place. And I think federal funding can help with that, using things like carbon offsets to help, like urban residents can help provide that funding through their own offsets to farmers.
Yeah, I was just thinking, you know, about essentially more of the knowledge transfer and just sort of, you know, just sort of partner, partnering up in some ways and just to kind of show that maybe there's a market, you know, for their, for them to change, what they're doing, and, I don't know, I'm just off the top of my head.
No, I think that's great. And the first thing I said was supporting those individuals working in agriculture that are already doing those things, because then you're showing that there is that market demand out there, and then it will hopefully grow. But you need to work on that backside of it as well and ensure that more people can enter that market who are, you know, either, you know, they own some family land and they're not sure what to do with it, make it a safer bet for them to enter urban markets.
Mr. Silvers?
Thank you. Just one more question. I've really enjoyed working from home for the past 18 months. Do you all see having a section in your plan that helps encourage companies to allow remote work?
Well, we're supportive of remote work. We didn't make it explicit in our plan because we aren't sure kind of how things will end up playing out. But I manage our Ride Share KC program at Mark, and that is definitely one of the things that we support. We encourage, if that's possible, within companies to remote work as much as you can, as much as your company will allow, so.
Any other questions? Well, thank you for the information.
All right, thank you.
It's very helpful and informative. We happen to have an Assistant City Administrator, I understand, fairly well-versed in many of these topics, so we're already on that path. Thanks again. Okay, let's move down to council items. The very first item has to do with approval of a resolution approving our 2022 through 2026 cars application process. Director McDonald, how are you this evening?
Very well. Good evening, mayor and council. This evening, I'm seeking approval for the resolution approving the 2022 to 2026 county assisted road system, otherwise known as CARs, application. Each year, the cities are asked to submit a five-year road improvement program to the county. For roads to be eligible, they must be a public improvement of a street, intersection, bridge, sidewalk, or bikeway that is integral part of the county's major and minor roadway system. Minor collectors must carry an average of 3,500 cars to be eligible. Minor collectors must carry an average of 3,500 cars to be eligible. The county uses a scoring system. They select cities' projects and allocate funds. The county will reimburse 50% of eligible construction and construction inspection costs. This year, we plan to submit the following projects. For 2022, 55th Street, West City Limits to Marion Drive. For 2023, Marion Drive between Johnson Drive and 55th Street. 2024 would be 49th Street from Switzer to Antioch. 2025 would be Marion Drive from 55th to Antioch Road. And then 2026 would be Johnson Drive from Mackey to East City Limits. All these projects will involve some sort of mill and overlay, substandard curb and sidewalk improvements, storm drainage improvements, including some items from the comprehensive plan, the 2040 plan, which could be bike lanes, shared use lanes, increasing sidewalks to five or six feet and putting them on both sides of the roads. I'm here to answer any questions on this.
Would you remind me what our interim is, what our standard is and how often we do mill and overlay? Because I swear we just did some of these streets.
Well, the one you're probably thinking is Johnson Drive, Mackey to EC Limits. And that one, that was probably been at least 17 years ago, but we did.
I was thinking 55th Street.
55th Street, see, that's been a long time. That, that's been at least 15 to 20 years.
Time really flies.
We, we do them a little more than other cities, yes. This is the second time we've done that since I've been here, too.
So, so how many years again?
We, we try to go 15, under 20, 15 to 17 is kind of the average.
Okay. So it must have been one of my new projects and now it's coming back.
Now, we did do 55th Street down towards Marion Drive. We kind of did that lower section. We did that creek project, drainage project.
Yeah, that's probably.
Like in 14 or 15 where we did haze as part of the residential, uh, uh, street program.
Thank you, Christopher.
So that could be what you're remembering also. Because I thought the same thing. I thought, we just did 55th Street. But it's not the street, it's just a little piece of it. Small portion of it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, go ahead. So as you know, I'm on the advisory board for downtown Marion revitalization. And so just looking at this timeline, you know, 2023 isn't that far away. And I know we do have a very good timeline for coming up with a concept for that. But do you see, is it realistic that we can come up with a, a plan for downtown and have it ready to, to deal with these Marion Drive projects that are on the list?
We do believe so. Usually we, we engineer a year ahead of time. The good thing about this, it's five one-year projects. So if we have to move something, swap it between, then we, we can have that opportunity to do that. The county lists us do that.
Great. Thank you so much. Bob Pape?
Yeah, I, I'd just like to make a comment that Overland Park is doing a lot of chip and seal and I'm not a big fan of that chip and seal. There was a lot of rocks on your car when you go down the road on it. We're doing mill and overlay versus chip and seal.
Correct, yes, we do not. The only time we've done chip and seals when we had to partner with Overland Park when they did Antioch and we split the cost with them on Marion's portions of it. That's the only time.
There's a lot of controversy over there about them keeping it.
Correct.
Because you notice you don't see chip and seal south of, I don't know, 95th Street. So.
Yeah.
You know, there's reasons for that, I think.
They're, they're moving to like a micro seal and we are partnering with them on Lowell to do a micro seal, which is basically a half inch or one inch mill. And then it's a small overlay over the top of it versus a chip and seal. So we're going to see how well that works on that street in the next.
And they have some experience with that, but do you know how that's worked out for them?
On the residential, it's worked well, which you've seen on like K-dots, done that on the highways. Once it starts coming up, it just, it's a giant mess. The prep is, is the most important thing.
Like thick paint, almost.
Exactly.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, yes, right ahead.
I move that the council approve a resolution approving the 2022 to 2026 cars application.
Whitney, you want to second that?
I second that motion.
Motion made and seconded. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Hans?
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell?
Aye.
Councilmember Naff?
Aye.
Councilmember Neal?
Aye.
Councilmember Pape?
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers?
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Debold?
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Very good. Next up is our monthly finance report. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I think the continued story with our finances and really, just as you look at the economy in general, is how it's doing and are we seeing impacts from the pandemic, et cetera? And our sales tax has continued to just really be outstanding this year. We're trending to have the best year we've had, which, again, I think we have to be cautiously optimistic about because we don't know what is going to happen. But one thing that has been lagging all this time has been our transient guest tax, our hotel motel tax. And I was very pleased to see we've been getting between 60 and thousand, 60 and 70,000 a quarter. And this afternoon, I got a notice that our second quarter receipt is going to be 100,000. And so that's a nice, nice increase. And I think further speaks to the fact that right now, the, the economy is chugging along for us. So otherwise expenditures were right on target, revenues were right on target and everything seems to be going well. And would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Phil?
Yeah, I, I found the charts comparing this year's sales tax year to date, or basically the year to date charts was interesting because obviously the 20, the current year is significantly in advance of the, of last year. Is, do you expect that that's due to the fact that during this last quarter, things were significantly reduced last year? And you expect it all, by the time we get to the end of the year, kind of catch up? Or do you anticipate this big increase in, in sales tax year to date to carry, carry forward? What do you expect on that?
Yes and yes, and I don't know. Basically, yes, whenever you compare us to 2020, you have to take into account that the economy was basically closed in May, or I'm sorry, March and April of last year. And so this year, we've been buzzing right along. And so it's probably not even really fair to compare this year to last year because of especially those two months. However, if you look at where we were, where we're at compared to where we were in 2019, 2018, 2017, we are significantly higher than those months as well. I have some concern that, I mean, we just don't know what's going to happen. And as I look out there and I look at supply chains and you hear, you know, Taco Bell can't serve all its food products because they're, the supply chain, et cetera. And we know that there's been supply chain issues with cars, et cetera. I mean, obviously if, obviously if there's no cars to sell, then there's no sales tax to collect. And so as far as do I think that will continue throughout the rest of the year? I, I think it, I think it depends.
Kind of as a follow-up to that, the, the chart that you show year to date comparatively for the previous several years was also helpful. But is it possible to do the same, to do the chart that has the breakouts by, you know, sector of the, for those several years or at least another year or two back?
Sure, we can add that.
I would really like to sort of see where, where those differences are, if possible. Because the auto sales is way different between last year and this year, but I'd like to sort of see how we go back.
We can do that.
Thank you.
I might add that I went to Freddy's last night and could not get onion rings because of supply, supply chain issues.
Right.
So, and then secondarily, I bought a car recently. It was not in Marion because the, the brand I chose wasn't represented. Looked hard to find a brand that wasn't represented, but I was able to do that. And, but the dealership that I bought it from, they had six new cars available on the, and this is in Kansas City, Missouri. Fairly large dealership, six for that brand. But they had cars all over their lot. So I asked the guy, I said, well, you know, what's going on? He said that they are going out and buying wholesale cars and selling them. And they said their sales are actually up as a result of that. So they're, this is how they're compensating car dealerships, is they're going out and finding cars, used cars at wholesale level and sell them at the retail level. And apparently, sales are doing pretty well.
And we appreciate used car sales taxes much as new car sales taxes.
Yes.
Anything else? Mr. Neal, do you have any questions?
I was just going to follow up one more time. One of the reasons I was asking for this is the, since the auto sales piece is something that may be subject to state legislation next year, it would be, you know, I just kind of want to know how much of the, the, if we're seeing a big increase in auto sales tax revenue, that's going to be even a, a bigger target possibly for people. So I'm just curious, that's all.
Okay, okay. We can certainly do that.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you very much.
Okay.
2020 building permit. Good evening.
Dear Mayor, Council, Brian Dyer, Community Bowman Director. Assuming we've got a short presentation to go over our 2020 building permits. The activity that happened that happened in 2020 obviously was affected by the pandemic. Probably some of the most interesting parts about it is we issued 482 building permits for the year, which is the second largest number of permits we've issued since we've been really keeping good records since about 2003. The interesting part is, and I mentioned to you all before, is that we only generated 17, about just under $17 million in building permit valuation. So when you get a building permit, amongst all the information that you provide, one of the things you provide is the valuation of the building, the evaluation of the work you're going to be doing. So that includes labors and materials. So that, that building valuation also plays into how much the building permit fee is. The permit fee is really sliding scale based upon the valuation of work being done. So for 2020, we generated about $152,000 in permit fees. Like I said, some of the interesting part is just how the number of permits don't really relate back to the valuation of permits. So here's since 2003, since we've really been keeping good records, kind of looking at the amounts and adjusted for inflation. So for 2020, again, issued just under $17 million in, in building permit valuation, which is very close to 2003, which we, we issued $16 million in valuation. So, but then looking at the numbers of permits issued, again, second highest amount. Last year was our highest amount of 582. This year, we had 100 less at 482. Or perhaps the most interesting graph is this one. There's a lot going on there, but the bars along the bottom, the orange is the building valuation in dollars of those years, so real dollars. The gray is adjusted for inflation to 2020 valuation. So as you go across there, you see that bar chart just is up and down, up and down, up and down. 2009, obviously, that was the depths of the Great Recession. So no surprise there that the building valuation was our lowest point. But then as you go along there, you see that 2020 is still pretty low in comparison to some of our big years. But again, like I said, issued a lot of permits, didn't have a lot of building valuation. So that obviously, it doesn't take a PhD to figure out what was going on there. It was lots of small projects, lots of people home during COVID, doing small projects, doing decks, doing fences, doing roofs or having the roofs done. So obviously, a lot of building activity is going on, so a lot of inspections were still being, having to be done. But really wasn't really the big projects that we are used to seeing here in Marion. So here's a breakdown of the permits issued. Number of permits is on the right. So we broke them out by commercial, demolition, MEP, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, grading permits, residential alteration additions. It has a lot in there. That also includes exactly what you think, someone making a change, remodeling other residents or making an addition to the resident. But this also includes fence and roofing permits, probably our two in quantity biggest number of permits that we issued. Single-family residential homes, so that's exactly it, a new home, and then sign permits. So again, our largest majority of permits we issued last year are in the residential alteration addition category. We issued 57% of the permits we issued were in that category. The next biggest category, again, was our MEP, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. But then, as we go over to building permit fees, you can see it shifts over to the commercial side. And next slide will explain that. So again, building permit fees, our largest category was just under $70,000 for the commercial sector, followed up by 46, just under $46,000 in the residential sector. So no surprise, why is the commercials sector generating our largest number of fees? Because the billion, building valuation is still the biggest, just under $11 million in building valuation. $11 million of work being done in our commercial sector in 2020. So again, not as many projects, but usually commercial projects are going to be a big project. And then if you go down to residential alterations and additions, it's just under 3 million. The next category up from that is 1.2 million of our mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. So that's really our 2020 building value, building permit season. We're off to a good start again for this year. We are expecting perhaps some more bigger projects this year. We already have some in there working. So it's going to be interesting again to see if, if the building valuation has any correlation to the number of building permits. So that is all I have on 2020 building permits. Be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Neal?
Couple of questions. We, the, the large-scale projects that, you know, amongst them were over the last, you know, several years in there, the chart that showed the up, up and down. Are, is the community center in there in, in terms of the valuation, building valuation numbers as well? And then Advent?
Yes.
Do, I assume that they generate, the Advent also generates building permit fees based on the valuation, even though their, their value is not proper, you know, property tax?
Correct. Yes, the valuation, the, correct. So the valuation, we charge building permits fees to everybody. Unless it's a city project, obviously. But so, so yes, while the work may be done on a exempt property.
Correct.
We still get building permit fees based upon the work that is being done.
And the, and the supposed, the value of the, of the property, the cost piece, is that how that works for the, for the permit valuations for, for even for those properties?
The property is typically not in that. It is simply materials and labor.
Well, okay, yeah, that's what I meant.
Materials and labor.
Right. So would you say that the, the big chunks of activity over the last three years were, what, what projects were they? There, you know, Advent obviously has done a lot.
You've named a lot of them. The other ones would be Reed. Reed's been in there as well. Audi, I believe, may be in 18. I could be wrong with that. Getting kind of a little bit far back from my memory to recollect. So those are some of the big projects that we probably have had over the last three years.
Do we, just a quick question, Brian. Do, do we book these upon issuing the building permit or upon completion and issuing a certificate of occupancy?
Oh, when we issue the building permit, not, so we, these are definitely pre, these, so we are getting the, the permit fees before the building is done. So before any work is really started on that, we have the permit fees.
Any, Whitney?
This is just a clarification. I think I understand the difference, but we separate residential alterations and additions from mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. Residential alterations and additions would be building footprint kind of things and mechanical, et cetera, is just inside.
A little bit more nuanced. It's a little bit more nuanced than that. So let's be clear. When somebody comes in to get a permit for a project, say it is a new addition to a home, they have got multiple trades in there. So they'll have the electrical, the plumbing. Those are all underneath that alteration. The MEP stuff is if someone's coming in for a new AC unit. Someone's coming in to get just a plumbing upgrade in their house or perhaps an electrical box upgrade. So that's what the MEP side is. And so that, that covers a lot of things. There's also, so this is all, MEP is also covering the commercial side as well. So if, if, a lot of times, some of the big, big projects are, someone's getting a new rooftop unit, new RTU. So that's some of the big projects on a commercial side. unit, new RTU, so that's some of the big projects on our commercial side. So, that would cover it in the MEP.
Anyone else? All right, well, thank you very much.
Sure, Mayor, and I think I have the next one as well.
Community development update.
So, just a few items to cover. Mr. McDonald's mentioned that as part of his cars project, the downtown Merriam PSP update. Councilmember Silvers was asking about that. We've had, we've had quite a bit of work on that. Our first meeting of the advisory group was held last week. It was an excellent meeting, so the project's rolling forward, going forward. I really enjoyed the conversation, it was an excellent conversation. The next meeting has not been set. I believe the next meeting will be more of a walkthrough, have an opportunity for people to walk through downtown, things like that. But obviously, for those of you that are on that committee, we'll be getting information out on that. And also, the consultant is working on a website for that. As you probably know, if you go to merriam.org/downtown, we already have on our side, on the city website, a website for that, so as soon as the consultants get their information done, it'll link right to that, and that'll be kind of the warehouse, the information place, place where everybody can go to see what's going on, see where the next meetings are and things like that, so to keep everybody tuned in to what's going on with that. The other project, as we all know that sometimes it gets a little confusing, is the Merriam Drive Lane Corridor Project, that is the northern portion of Merriam Drive. This week is a big week for that. We've got three meetings for that, three days of meetings for that. The big one to remember is that on Fri, Wednesday, July 28th, from 5:00 to 7:00 is the open house. That's the big public open house. Everybody from the public is encouraged to come to that. It'll be over at the community building, so anybody from the general public that has interest in this project, please come over. We'd love to have a conversation with you, get some ideas, talk to you about what we see over, see on the northern Merriam Drive and kind of some plans for it. Just, again, that is a project that we're partnering with Mid America Regional Council as well as the Unified Government and Overland Park. Overland Park is the lead agent, the lead agency for that project. Another project that's going on on the planning side of things, we're doing a bike connection plan, been having meetings on that, so that's going well. Really excited about that, looking forward to that coming out. And then all, all these things really wrapped up really nicely with the comprehensive plan efforts that the planning commission and you all did last year and got that approved. I, I know I've spoken to you in the past about the downtown improvement grant, the exterior grant. We do have an application for that, and we're expecting to get another one coming in on that, so the work that, that the neighborhood services officer, David Easley, of getting that information out, sending out letters to everybody directly really seems to help on that. Some things that we're all seeing commercials for, Bob's Furniture Store, that is getting closer to being open, we're working on them to get the final inspections done for that. Also, if you've been down Merriam Drive, you can't miss that DS Bus Line is working on their, their private entrance. The other side of that, the other part of that, is they're also be working on the parking lot improvements over that. They are getting very close to getting a permission for that, just waiting for the plat to get filed with the county, so that's getting very close to being, so hopefully it'll just be a seamless transition going from doing the, the entry point over to the parking lot. And then the last thing, just, just an FYI, your planning commission is going to be meeting live and in person a week from Wednesday, so they are very excited to be all in this room again and having a conversation. So, with that, happy to answer any questions you all may have about community development.
Any questions? No? Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Strangle, do we have any staff items this evening?
Only update I have is sometime on Saturday, Representative Davids will be in the area, will be doing a quick tour of Turkey Creek, and will, I think there'll be some media and press related to that, so the mayor and community development director will be on site, but we don't have a time on that, but at some point in time on Saturday afternoon, we would expect that to occur, so pretty excited about that.
Are you going to let, let us know when that is, Whitney? Would you like to join me? All right.
Sure.
Okay.
When I know, I will share that information. That's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
No questions? Okay, well, we'll see, what's next? I think it's adjournment. So, anybody interested in adjourning, would like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move we adjourn.
Go right ahead.
I move we adjourn.
And a second?
I'll second, Mayor.
Madam Clerk?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.